We have to take that clock out of here or put one up there. By by next meeting. Sorry. Okay, it is seven o'clock. I will call a meeting to order. Next order is the pledge of religion.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to republic or which it stands one nation under God. In this small.
Uh, welcome. Okay, we have a special guest tonight. We invited. Robert Druck to come in and explain a few things, answer a couple of questions that we had. And we will give you the first agenda if you wanna. Jump in there.
Where's the hot seat?
Um, my source.
No, no. Questions, so I don't know what my staff said you, but knowing you have issues or concerns with the adult family home issue. Did my staff send you anything? All right, Don. I'll have you collate this real quick. So my lovely bride Dawn. So. There is no state requirement notifying anybody.
Right.
As you well know by now, uh, kind of Senator Shro contacted you as well. Thank you. But with some facilities, there is a requirement that the state notify CBRF, certain other things at the time of application. So it's a pretty simple. Change in the law potentially, although there's a lot of federal regulations that deal with ADA issues. You can't treat these facilities different than you would treat any other resident. So that becomes a very slippery slope. So I will tell you that because. We're not dealing with sexual predators or any of those kinds of issues because we're not waiving any of those laws. But we do have a notification process and with certain other facilities, we have kind of a. Process where they're supposed to have an outreach group to work with the local police, the local municipality, a notification and then kind of. Become integrated into the community. So we can look at those options, but we also have to be very aware of federal guidelines. So I just. Put it in a kind of elevator speech. That's where we're at, you know, because we have to be very careful. You know, they're taking care of disabled adult in Charlie's here. So you can talk about their his facilities, you know. But you can't treat those facilities any different than you would any other resident in the community. There's no requirement that if my child is. Born with Down syndrome or some mental disability that I have to notify the village. You know, or any community. You know, or if my child buying, you know, can't see or blind, deaf, dumb, any of those requirements, you know, or has learning disabilities. I mean. It becomes a very slippery slope as you can imagine. So I think because we're treating it equally to other homes, we can do some simple legislative changes. But really all it does is give you the power to. Be notified. And that is it. That is where the end of your powers. Start and begin is just to say this facility is going to be located there and that's it. So I want to be clear on that. So there's no misunderstanding as to what we can and can't do. Any questions?
What are our main, uh, after we got checked into a bunch of stuff and our attorney was giving us a good description and as mentioned, a few of the things that we have and whatever. Uh, it boils down to, we really would like to have been notified so we could be prepared to address. What we might find if there be a fire or ambulance or this or that. Um, just to give us kind of a one up so that we can serve them to the best of our ability.
Right. And I understand that, but again, it's a fine line. You would have those same challenges, but. Child was born that couldn't hear. The police would have a hard time communicating with them or, you know, so you can't treat these facilities different than you would treat every other facility. So as far as notification, I think we can accomplish that, but beyond that, I can't share with you. You know. Medical records, cognitive abilities, all of that stuff. That's.
Well, help, I had kind of helped in some instances.
Well, but you you already know it's eight or fewer. You know, so if I under. Don, you know, you know, you know where I come from. So either fewer, when somebody moves into Fredonia, we don't have a limit. If you have. Five kids, you don't have to notify. If you have six kids, you have to notify. If you have mom and dad, it gives eight. You know, so there's no limit to that either. So you you gotta be aware of, you know, you cannot treat these facilities. For these residents different than you would treat everyone else.
Yeah.
So, but because they're a licensed facility, we can put in some requirements for notification. Make sense? Beyond that, we can't tell you there's. You know, people in there that have learning disabilities, people that have. What IQ they may or may not be able or where their cognitive levels are, or whether they have seeing problems or hearing problems. I I can't get into any of that. So does that make sense?
I I imagine you're representing some of the homes. I've heard of no issues with any of the facilities. It just. Our police and fire department, ambulance want to know so they can be prepared. And some neighbors just question, well, what's going on here? Only one is the answer. So you can tell neighbors. And that'd be great if you could do legislation to do that. If you could do that and. Um, Senator Strobel could run something through the state. That would be very much appreciated.
Yeah. And if you, in the email we got back from DHS and ledge council, which is our. Full-time staff attorneys. It pretty much spells it out in some of the barriers that we'll have, but I think we can get it done something. At least a notification. But beyond that, we're very, very, very limited. So I don't know if you have questions from Charlie. I mean, he'll be glad to come up to there. Charlie, how many facilities do you run? How many? Oh, that's it, huh? So Charlie's a slacker. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have my wife. So, yeah, and he, and I can tell you, I've known him for a long time. He runs a great facility. Has never had any problems. So I know your issues aren't with the facility or with him, but. Notification. So, you know, but again, he's going to be limited to as to what he can share. Other than they're a facility and they. Fall into this licensing category. So, you know. You want to add to that?
Sure. Uh, you know, I think you'll see too.
You want to come up?
Sure. My name is Charlie. Uh, my name is Brian. And. Surely you've been doing it, Charlie. Celebrating ten years. Keeps us busy.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I think too, when you, when you. You see the license to, you'll, you can also see on that license what populations they serve. There's many. And I think that can help folks out a lot. Like we serve intellectual disabilities and developmental disabilities. Um, but these folks, and by the way, this is Robin Baldwin. She works our operations. Julie handles all of our admissions and resident needs and so forth, but um. You know, these folks go to school, they go to work, they have families. And they've all got dreams and aspirations and we just, we just do our best to help them and mentor them. Um, we serve adults. Eighteen eighty, uh, men and women and um. I guess, I guess, you you know, when I first got into mental health and told my wife that we were going to be working in mental health. This, this stigma came up and she was, there was this fear of the unknown. And and really, these are, these are just people that that need a hand or, and we provide care and supervision. And so, and we, we do that twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We provide transportation. We take them to their appointments or work and things of that nature, provide meals and make sure that everything's okay with them. But I just want to assure you, neighbor wise, we all have business cards. We're open to any calls and we're happy to work with the community like any other good neighbor would. And uh, we do our best. We try our best to keep to ourselves and. And uh, and have fun. Questions?
I think uh. To your point, I I think there is a stigma and I think it's maybe lack of education for the surrounding people. If you think group home. And everybody's thinking the worst possible scenario.
Right.
So I mean, these, everybody needs a place, right?
And I guess I just want to share with you that. We've been around the block and and we know. We know what's healthy and what's not as far as working within the community because, you know. It's like, it's like any, any community, any community, there might be a problem here or there along the way. We all know that. And the same can help happen with uh, with the folks that we serve. I'm not saying everything's perfect, but but I I don't think it's any different than any other family uh, goes through from time to time. But uh, I want to thank you very much and I I'll give you my card as well. If if you've got any questions or anything or anything comes up, please feel free to contact me and we'll do our best to. To answer any questions or whatever you need. Fair enough?
Sure. And I want to be clear. I asked him before the meeting, you know, do you have any problems? We did this, but I'm talking about as far as notification, absolutely not. So license isn't going to spell out every patient's, you know, acuity level, but it's going to give you a general. Idea of what type of people there is our acuity. You know, and if you look at what's being proposed in Sockville, my home community, you know, with Mel's charity, we're looking at almost sixty million dollar development. Where we're gonna integrate people with special needs and learning disabilities, you know, you know, work within the. The new facility that's going to be built there, American orthodontics, trying to do some of that stuff. So there's a tremendous need out there. If you said. Everybody needs a home, you know, and then I am going to be perfectly blunt. That is not to say. If you have eight residents in your home, you're never wanting to have a problem. I guarantee you, if I picked eight people off the street, one of them is going to be in trouble in the next five years. So it's just a matter of odds, you know, that. Just because they're in a home, but there are very strict rules that I, if you guys want, I can share with you. I think the email addresses it, you know, this is this certified adult family home kind of thing, and it is very strict about who the operators are. And I'd be happy, I'll leave a copy for whoever wants it. If you guys want to make copies, you can, you know, so this is not a real minimal license. I mean, it's down the scale of licenses. But they're still heavily supervised and monitored. So I think that's. Anything you want to add?
I just want to just be clear that our, that our adult family home is a maximum for people. We are licensed for individuals and uh, yes, those are DHS regs eighty-eight. Uh, for adult family homes and everybody goes through training. I I think I read something too, all of our uh. All of our staff go through actual training. They go through background checks. Um, and we're very stringent upon that. You know, because we we need to count on these folks.
And you're hiring, right? Yeah, everybody's hired. It's.
So really, Bartel has mentioned him part Washington. You don't have any problems.
You visit or call a place once in a while, but I don't tell you that's. Very, very simple as far as many calls.
Yeah, Josh, you had a question.
If I could ask you a question, again, I echo what Bill says. I mean, I'm glad they're here. I'm glad you're invested in this community and we're glad to have these. Folks here, but just to kind of back up to kind of how this all started, I think that would kind of help. I don't know which which property do you own on Wilson Street? Is it the one on the corner? Second from the end from. Two thirty-four. Okay. So you live right before you go over the hill heading north on Wilson. Okay. So how this happens, I live two houses south of there. I live in a brown house, just south there on the same side of the street. So I think this is one of those things we've talked about before, just neighbors being neighbors kind of deal. I think the, how this all got started. Was the neighbor that lives right next to you in the blue house there was under the assumption, was told that it wouldn't, an investor was coming in to buy the property. So she thought it was a flipper. And then when they found it, found out what it was and she was like, hey, what's going on with this? So that's how it all kind of started. It's just kind of, I think it would have been. More of, if she had known what was going on, I don't think it would have been an issue. And it's not an issue, but I'm just saying that's how this all kind of came about ahead and. Once everyone got the information, she was here at the meeting too. Once everyone got the information, everyone's been perfectly fine. Like I said, we got no problem. We're glad you're here. And it's just one of those things where I guess a little more. Information that she tried to get maybe would have been a little more helpful, but that's not to say there's nothing wrong with what's going on. That's just kind of how this all started. Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Another phone. Those around with us and leaves and my mode and my. So he met her also. He's well deserved.
Yep.
And so she met him, she met our ladies guys.
No, like I said, nothing wrong. Just that's where the slight confusion came in and how it's all kind of started and so.
So, all right, so I addressed that question?
Yeah.
All right. Then I got the letter from you guys from the city of Milwaukee wanting to raise taxes, right? It was not the village of Fredonia that sent me this letter, was it? Little jab there, gentlemen. So you got Dewey Strobel's letter?
Yeah, we got three. It's about what I expected.
Yeah. It actually was a little more polite than I expected. So.
He wasn't talking to you.
Yeah. So I will tell you, uh. Don and I have served together. I haven't served, you know, so when I ran the county board. Trust me, I've lived under the levy limit, same as you guys. They're not easy. I understand the frustration. Uh, matter of fact, I offered legislation a few years ago for those communities like you, like Ozaki County. That have played by the rules and kept the levy below net new construction when they could. And then, but then it was a use it or lose it thing. So then we changed the law to where you could carry that over, right? Even up to five years is what we changed the law to. We're looking at more of that. Um, I just spent with Speaker Boss last week. Um, and a bunch of other people. I don't want to make promises, but uh, one of the. The election didn't go as we had hoped a few weeks ago, or at least the way I had hoped, to where we could get done what I'm talking about getting done. But I'm still hopeful that we can. Look at a formula to get rid of shared revenue completely and replace it with sales tax. So that you are indexed because we know it it is a difficult problem. I spent the entire summer. Meeting with all the trade groups, union groups, the realtors, uh. Wisconsin Counties Association, the um. League of municipalities, the towns association. We've been having regular monthly or sometimes more than a once a month meetings, talking about housing and how to get people relocated. And when everybody started to net new construction, it becomes difficult. You know, you're still close enough to the metro areas where you're getting some development, but if you live in. Where I have a farm in Hillsboro, Wisconsin, there is just nothing there. There's absolutely, and you're relying on net new construction. Now they remodeled their hospital, which is now driven their little market, but other communities have nothing. You know, so we think replacing it either in its entirety or a lot of it was. Sales tax helps. You know, so we would tie it to whatever the sales taxes, that would become the. Funding source for shared revenue. So you're no longer tied to. State. As far as us deciding what shared revenue is going to be and who gets the bigger piece and who doesn't. That formula will get worked out, you know, and as I always say, the devil's in the detail and we're always away from getting that done, but. As you know, sales tax. Especially under our current leadership, prices are not going down, they're going up. So sales taxes, that's why the state's in such good shape right now. I'd love to tell you that it's because we've done such a great job in the state, but it helped the. Federal government send us fifty billion dollars. Which drove sales tax and income tax and everything through the roof. You know, nobody's thinking about that, that the six billion we have is probably a direct result of the fifty billion they sent us. But nobody thinks about that that fifty billion came from all of us in the first place. So we're looking at that. You know, and the other thing is, is we changed the laws with the um, Wayfair suit to drive. Sales tax revenues. There's so much stuff is being done. I can't tell you the last time I was in a. Coles or a department store. I mean, I didn't think I'd ever say this, but I too order almost everything online these days. So I think that's going to be the trend. So we're generating. All of that sales tax that used to just get a fly under the radar. So that's why the state's doing as well as we're doing financially right now, despite. A pretty bad economy. So I think that's what we're going to do is look at doing, hopefully do that. If we don't, we know we have to address shared revenue. Do I anticipate anything being done with levy caps? No, I I share Dewey's sentiment. Especially with the Senate having the veto power over the governor right now, even though the assembly doesn't. It's just not going to happen. We don't own the governor's office right now. Even if we did, it'd be even less of a chance of it happening. You know, like Dewey said in his letter, a little snarky, but you know, we don't get too many calls to our office. Would you please raise my taxes? I get calls from you guys, you know, saying, help us out. We're struggling and and we understand probably the biggest need, and I know it is here is. You know, please fire EMS. You know, we, everybody across the state is struggling. You know, here. We have a very good work ethic. So we still have somewhat of a strong base as far as volunteers. Other parts of the state that are aging and very, very rural. They have no one. You have a heart attack, you're done. Unless your wife can take you or your spouse or vice versa, you're, there's nobody within an hour. There's absolutely no medical services within an hour of a lot of our communities. So we know we have to address that, whether it's a carve out with shared revenue, additional. Money being thrown in with shared revenue. You know, we saw what Ozaki County did with putting up a, what, five hundred? Thousand, million, how much you guys put up? Five million, five million. Five million. And we know that's start from money.
And that's going to disappear.
Very quickly. So we're aware of that, you know, it, but I will tell you it is going to be an uphill battle. But I think we're in a spot where we know. We can't continue to hold everybody at the same level. Unless we do something with fire, EMS, police, those kinds of things.
Yeah, most of your small municipalities were doing a really good job of being thrifty. When revenue limits hit. And there was no fat packets all over the place that they could absorb over the years. And we are one of those communities and we've just been suffering.
I know, right? I saw the headline and the tax increase had to kill you guys, you know, but it all catches up and you've got to. Deal with these things and and, you know, you guys have been. Doing a great job for a long, long time and, you know, so. The levy limits was never aimed at communities like this or pretty much any community in my district.
Except for Milwaukee.
But it was aimed at other communities that just abused the hell out of the law. You know, people, you guys know me, I'm blunt. So I mean, that's just, it was just pure abuse and that's not going to be lifted anytime soon. You know, and there is no alternative unless you have one. To net new construction. You know. It's just, there isn't. A good. Fix for that right now and and I'm not big on Fredonia, but most communities have made a very poor choice, in my opinion, and Dewey really rail up this. Of tipping everything. So all of your net new construction is under a tip where you don't really realize the money for twenty years. And it was a lot of it was very short sighted and here in Fredonia, not so much. But if you go into a lot of communities, it was all in big supermarket or super centers and stuff which are becoming obsolete now. Everybody buying online. So you got no tax revenue. For twenty years. And those buildings are becoming almost obsolete now. You saw American Family, bought a building for nine million dollars, nine point six million in Milwaukee. And they're getting rid of it. They're not even going to fill it up. Because nobody wants to, you can't get people to come to work in the offices anymore. They want to work from home. So when you look at the tax revenue, it's going to be lost on retail. And office space, it is going to be a dramatic hit. To all kinds of communities and it's going to be way worse for other communities than it is for Fredonia. So we know we got to address that. So. I don't have the answer for you and I don't want to commit, but I think we're going to come up with a, a solution that I think will be a, a good long-term fix, tying it to sales tax.
I just read this week of that six billion dollars. There's talk that income taxes may be lowered or, you know, both goes back so we don't. Pay so much money. I don't think. Cause you get paid for twelve months of the year and it's pretty ins- consequential if we get back five hundred dollars. And your paycheck to paycheck. I think it's more important. Now politically, it sounds good for legislatures to say that, but. It's not that important to the people financially. I don't, it's the life field.
Not to help.
Right. It's, yeah, it doesn't matter. But if you could use the money for something useful. Or like the fire department and paramedics that we need to fund because it's going to be catastrophe. That doesn't happen soon. Just an opinion from myself that wanted, wanted to know that.
No, I agree. And 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 everybody in the legislature has different opinions. I guess I'm kind of a practical guy and I look at. How everybody wisely invested those ARPA checks. And it didn't take real hard to figure it out when you couldn't buy a boat or a motorcycle or snowmobile or a four wheeler. Because they made such prudent investments in their future that they went and bought all kinds of recreational things during COVID. They didn't invest it. They, they didn't pay down their house. They didn't put it in the savings account. They went and blew it, you know, and that's. You, you can't argue that fact. Some people needed the money and I agree. Not the vast majority of people. So I am not in favor of, and I don't think the large majority of us are, a one-time tax rebate with this money. It's more about making an investment. And and Don, you've heard me preach about this before. Government is the most badass thing ever. Because when revenues are up. Services are at their lowest demand. You know, people are doing okay, unemployment's low, you know, revenues are up here. So what do we do? We cut taxes and do all that or give money back. And then when the economy starts to falter, services go way up. Or the need for services, but our revenue goes way in the tank.
We gotta raise, raise taxes.
Raise taxes at the worst possible time. So that's why we have made a really strong commitment. Our rainy day fund in the state is higher than it's ever been. You know, we made a commitment to do that at the county level when I was there. And we made a commitment eight years ago when I ran for office to do that. So our reserve account is way up. Way up there. Do I think it should be higher? Yes. Because we will have a downturn again and it wasn't that long ago. We were defaulting on payments to state of Minnesota. If Governor Walker wasn't. We were deferring bond payments, all kinds of stuff after he took over from Doyle. I don't ever want to see Wisconsin in that spot again. So I think having a substantial reserve account so that we can be practical. Is it in business and in all of our lives, certainty is the thing we appreciate the most. It's those blips and uncertain things that happen in all of our lives that throw us off. So. We are going to look at an income tax reduction, but also making some. Prudent, long-term investments while we can and while we've got the reserves. To say, let's take this. Bit of a flyer because we could take a hit on sales tax and dedicate one percent of the entire or a half percent or whatever the number is. Let's say it's one, one percent of, you know, the state's five percent, but all go to shared revenue. That would be a huge shift in funding versus us holding that shared revenue flat for a decade. You know. You, you know, being on the county board, Josh, the sales tax revenue has only gone down a couple of times in the last twenty years. You know.
Are you familiar with what we're trying to get going in Washington and Ozaki County with sharing the uh. Sales tax that comes back to the county and audition is absolutely.
With who?
Ain't going to happen. The uh, the twelve and a half million dollars that Ozaki County gets. Their sales tax returned to. Share that money with the municipalities who actually. Put in the work to raise that money in purpose. That's getting concerned with. The county uses it. They build up. A jail, they do this, they do that, whatever. That should be returned. Give the county ten, fifteen percent administrative, but all the rest of it should be. Give the county ten fifteen percent administrative fee, but all the rest of it should be returned per capita or some formula. To all the municipalities, town, cities and villages.
Good luck with that.
I know.
Yeah, it's it's great conversation to have, but keep in mind that. The sales tax, the county portion of sales tax was done to build the justice center. That got wrapped up a long time ago and the decision was made to buy down the tax levy. Well, I, if you're sitting on the county board, which couple of you are, I wouldn't find it very difficult for you to go. To have a thirty, forty, fifty percent jump at the tax rate at the county level by giving back that money. And that's what it would be because I, it used to be, and these are ballpark numbers, a third. Well, twenty-five to thirty-seven percent of our total tax income came from the sales tax. You're looking at at least that big of an increase in county taxes. So, yeah, you'd get your money back, but every taxpayer. In the county would pay that much more. In taxes because you're, you can't cut services at the county to that extent, as you well know. So taxpayers aren't gonna come out. Even on that. And it would really affect homeowners versus the sales tax, which. Is spread out amongst everybody, including people that visit us from Illinois. So I cannot see the county board ever doing that. I will tell you, Washington County is having similar discussions when I meet with their groups and their town associations and. You know, I I, when I meet with their groups, they say the same thing. We need our share. Washington County's taken. Instead of buying down their levy, they kind of took it and said, we're gonna dedicate it. To infrastructure and highways and that's their, been their policy for years. Kind of the same policy, but they dedicated it to that kind of stuff versus us just buying down the tax rate here. And going in the general fund. I have not heard yet, I I could be wrong. Of one county giving back to the local municipality that month. Even though, you know, we made an effort to say, we have a sheriff's department, we can provide all these services. But everybody wants their own police department and, you know. There are a lot of opportunity for shared services, but nobody wants to really go that route.
Yeah, well, we're hoping that that returns um half percent money that the county is gonna get. That they're eventually gonna decide to humor some of that to help us continue. With the uh paramedics that we're setting up now with the, with the.
Now that would, I could see them dedicating a percentage of the sales tax to that, to continuing efforts. And going to more of a countywide medical service system.
Well, Tommy just said, right, but it doesn't make any difference if we keep the top, the villagers' taxes lower or the county taxes lower, as long as we keep some of the taxes lower. Well, there's this for them and they're, they're, you know.
Well, there's a lot of others. There's two other huge taxes out there. One is the nine one one tax that goes under gray cellphone.
And seventy-five cents.
Then money does not get used. And by law, it was supposed to be used, so they changed the name of it. So it didn't have to come back to communities or go to central dispatch. So there's still a lion's share of that money. That goes right into the general. It's one of two taxes I've tried. Because I think we're being totally dishonest with our constituents and saying, oh, this is meant for nine one one. Matter of fact, that's what it says. And it doesn't go for that, go right in the general. And the other one's utility tax. You look at utility, there's a huge utility tax. It was meant to offset taxes for communities that located power plants. Because they don't pay property taxes. Well, that didn't happen either. So there's hundreds of millions of dollars sitting there. That are being plugged into the general fund that were intended for other purposes. The nine one one is one. Hopefully we can look at this session and get some consensus to say, this is what it was intended for. How about we actually use it for that? What a novel approach. So hopefully we can do that and come up with some way of funding. Statewide some EMS stuff and, you know, we'll see. I can't make any promises. This we don't have the governor's.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions?
So, but if you guys have, as we get into the budget, I, you guys know, you can always call, but. If you have some novel approaches and, you know, you guys are as bright as anybody I know. Don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call. Say, have you guys thought about this? Have you thought about this? Have you, you know, because. We don't think of everything. And sometimes we get stuck in our own little world and it seems like. Thirty years ago, I was sitting at the county board doing this. So, you know, sometimes we lose a little perspective, so. I apologize for that, but you know, don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call us. All right. Any other questions?
All right, we all appreciate the work you do for us.
Uh, we try. Great, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you from the one pen? Okay, thank, thank you for attending.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, next we have uh consent agenda, minutes in the bills. All right, we have no additional bills? No additional, okay. I have a motion to approve. Okay, I didn't hear it coming from that end of the room. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Open session for citizens' questions and comments. Hearing none, I move on. Reports, operations of village. Um, by myself, I don't have anything that's not on the agenda to report. So I will move to the village administration.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, well, first off, as I included my report, our public works director, Eric's been doing a great job so far. I'm really working for that stipend, so thank you so much. We've shared a lot of late night texts and emails and so it just shows that he's, he's doing a good job. Um, we did receive two applicants for the crew person position, which she's gonna be interviewing. So that'll be our first round. Um, we have a newspaper ad that went out um acquiring um for other applicants as of this week, so we might get additional interest from there. Um, and then I'll touch on the clerk position. We actually have seven applications so far for the clerk's position. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're all qualified, but we have seven applications. That two was also in the paper, so we're hoping that we'll get a decent amount of qualified individuals that we'll bring in for um interview process, similar to what we did for Eric. And then we'll bring to you guys for a department handed approval. Um, since adopting the budget, uh, plus and I had a fun day or two uh working on inputting all the tech stuff. This is very relieved that that's done, right? And the county treasurer is very happy with everything that we did as well, so we'll watch for those tax bills to go out. Um, I started diving into your employee handbook policies and compensation plan stuff. I'm really just in the research um gathering phase. So calling a lot of like sized municipalities, finding out what they're doing for things like PTO and sickly, right, vacation time and compensation. And so we'll compile all of this information and then that'll be part of what I'll present to you um in in January. The uh, I mentioned about the attorney follow up on some items. I'll just share with you briefly, the car situation, Ken Watry. Um, we've got a general answer on that, Mr. Watry. Um, his next step is to make an appeal to the Board of Appeals. Um, for his uh denial at the planning commission. He's aware of that. Uh, he knows what the next meeting is. If he so chooses, he's able to come back to or go to that board. Um, to uh ask for a reconsideration of his uh, his uh request. And uh, I'll just touch on the joint EMS meeting, so I attended that with a couple of you guys as well. Um, very good discussion. I intended to go there just to sit back and listen. Uh, but very quickly was roped into doing a lot more things than I had signed up for, which is okay. Um, so at the end of that meeting, I was actually tasked to uh put together the draft intergovernmental agreement for all four municipalities. Um, so I'm currently working on that. I had a good meeting with the fire chief um to get his opinion on that. Um, what it'll, i- in simple terms, what it'll end up being is there'll be a EMS board created. That'll be the governing body with representatives from each municipality. Um, and and then that board will then decide the budget policies and the auspices of just a joint EMS service. So not fire, but we're just worrying about EMS services right now. So the majority of the equipment um will be housed here because we have the largest facility to do it. And if so chosen by this governing body, our fire chief, uh Brian would then be also designated as the EMS chief. So he would be the one running that program. Um, as was shared by your village president and and Mr. Brooks. The, the uh, the system is funded through three years and we have good numbers for that. But then come January twenty twenty-six, you're looking at three hundred fifty thousand dollars that needs to come up with somehow from the four municipalities. And so in this agreement, I have at least what my proposal is to um fund this. Speaking of funding, at that same meeting too, we had Mike Colis, who's the executive director of the towns association. He was there. I'm just kind of giving options and asking a lot of questions about this. Uh, he talked about state levy limits and what we could especially assess what we couldn't. Um, but but in the end, whether it's county sales tax dollars, whether it's our dollars or a mixture of the two. I I'm, I'm not gonna be, I'll be blunt with you guys. It's gonna take additional dollars to fund this if that's something that you want to do. So I think as, as each municipality decide that they want to be part of this intergovernmental agreement. Um, I can tell you from a service standpoint, I'm sure it'll be better. But you guys need to make the decision on whether it's worth the dollars, the extra dollars that are gonna come due three years from now. So. Not all doom and gloom, but just so you know, that'll be coming. Um, and then finally, good news. I participated in the annual tree lighting. Thank you, Trusty Gerkey and everybody else who helped to get that uh up and running. It was an awesome time. Brought my kids, you know, we had a fun time meeting, meeting residents and having a blast. So. I think that's it. The rest will be covered later on in the meeting. Thank you. So the things that are within our um, our control, like the domain name and things like that, we're moving forward with. Uh, the um email addresses, things like that. Um, it's funny, I can share with you about that on the town side, how their website's looking, because I've gotten drafts and and reviewed it plenty of times. I'm not sure what's going on with your village rep. I, we spoke, was it two weeks ago? Is that when I was on the phone with them? And then I haven't heard anything back since. Um, so I will happy to keep pestering them because I too want to see that up and running in January. So.
Um, other than the report, uh unless you have any question on that, I have nothing further except to tell you, I understand there was some discussion. On village records being stored in that basement. There are none. They were moved. A while ago, Roger and Sandy moved them. I can't tell you where they are. Not my records, but there aren't any there. So there's none being damaged by any water or anything like that. Pardon me? There are, I have records down there. I have boxes of old citations running back probably twenty-five years. Um, but they are on shelves and and they're fine. But there are no other village records there, nothing. Nothing at all. So. Pardon me?
Are they in an alternate secure location?
I, I don't know where they went.
So secure that maybe the marshal.
Yep, I, I know where mine are. That's it. That's all I, I lay claim to.
Yeah, Tim Stephan told me that records from my belly were down there. That's, that's why I.
I don't believe so. Yeah, I don't think there's anything in there. Those were moved a while back. We have a. Uh, quasi evidence room. We take no evidence, so there's none in there. And then there's some storage on shelves, but I don't believe there's anything else in that building.
So what else instigated this was discussion of possible water damage happening in that building due to the roof. You know the status of the roof conditions?
Roof had been repaired, was my understanding. Actually, I paid for some of that. Yes, no, building does leak. The basement is wet during summer. If it rains, it gets wet, goes right down the stairwell. So, yes, basement is wet. Not now, but it will be. Spray, right, yeah. Right, I don't believe it's from the roof.
All right, any questions?
I can keep looking. Trust you would have gone there already. I try. Anything else?
All right, uh, any questions? Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Josh, you wanna cover this?
The one that I already covered?
Yeah, I suppose that was sufficient. It hit all at one time. Okay, the uh, we don't have a fair chief report. Public Works uh report.
I think the biggest thing you're gonna wanna know about is well two. Well, two was out of service. There was a hole. And a problem with the pump on the reservoir side, so right now.
And that's our time of duty.
Uh, I talked to Marty from municipal well that pulled it. And said he believes that hole wasn't there yesterday. That's been going on for. A year, up to two years. Now finally everything broke out. So that well hasn't been efficient for over a year.
If I could just do a point of order, you're actually talking about something that's an item D. So we'll cover that when we get to that agenda item. Do you have anything else in your general report?
My three guys that are there, they're like. By phone and I stopped, I was down there this morning at six um. I stopped, I was here yesterday and four and so they need me, I can come in. Like Friday after Thanksgiving, I was working on that well, so. They need me, I come in, but January ninth was tracked to be late.
All right, we do have a. A public first director report in here, but I imagine Brandon did this one?
I know the marshal didn't say anything, but winter parking rules take effect today, I'm assuming.
If someone wants to enlighten me what those are, I'll be happy to get it on the Facebook page.
You just can't park on the street. What is it between two AM to six AM?
They're just overnight parking.
December first to April first. We'll get people in here in March.
That's, that's on the goals list.
So then uh we will go to our president's report. There's also a man.
That's a lot of numbers, um, we make a wire rule on here, so we should get up and do that. Then working hard to give our place insurance in January is a lot of what we thought. He bought it and spent a day and had three hours getting from them and area model stuff, but that looked pretty well.
Told you one's gonna be scary.
You're almost there.
All right, any questions?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Um, okay, we want to report the person.
Never rain that day for sure.
So, I didn't.
Make sure that's something.
Anyway, so this went through a lot of that stuff, we were getting, um, we're making my real. We delay in right now, I feel like we're in now, um, you know, uh. A lot of good, uh, feedback on empty, I assume, and here. And then I guess the last thing we went over was, there was a materialist for. The bridges for the small course, to see what we can use, so, um, our. One of the players not there, so we were able to discuss what we were going to solve out. And then I'm just got a little bit of getting two hour holes up for the paperless system for the stall course that's coming here. Let's see what ideas on that, which should not be a song to do whatsoever, um, once we have the website up and start that to go, we will watch that and program.
What did you press them? That brings us to items for discussion and action. Now, is, uh. We need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two six. Is that a six or a G?
It's supposed to.
Yes, G hood, I. That's twenty-two J is, uh. Oh, that's red version, okay.
I'm making a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two dash six.
So I have a motion and a second discussion. The recommendations that the administrators and the council.
Little bit confused because. I mean, amended copy, it's ordinance twenty. Twenty-two dash seven.
Well, it can allow to recognize there, then you can just fix it and we get.
So do I have to amend my motion? Yeah. Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two dash seven.
In a second. Okay. So this was, uh, this comes back to us, we are jotted, we've let it detect again, and we're taking our personnel and making our development. Let's see, uh, president of the board.
You got a person, a second on the table?
Yeah, we have no discussion, okay, let's hold, all those in favor. Motion chair, the announcement. Now we need a motion to the resolution. Twenty twenty-two J.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash J.
Discussion. Uh, the. Addition, it says eighteen thousand dollars. This budgeted, um, this would be sixty thousand dollars. Would be. Yeah, the original amount, the president knows six thousand, right, so.
Yeah.
Administrators.
Correct, regardless, none of them are asked to be perfect, because these can't even go into effect until the start of your terms. So it's gonna be a mixture, uh, for a little while. So either way, the budgeted amount that you guys approved in your twenty twenty-three budget is gonna cover a mixture of both the per diem stuff and the. Annual amounts, but I know what you're saying, yes, I did my rough. Yeah, yeah.
That's enough. I don't agree with four thousand, but, um, I'm just wondering. I think that, um. Jug is as well as. The six. Based on the county board, the county board chair gets three times. The amount of compensation as a supervisor, so it's not a. It's not unusual. Way of setting the option, but. It's a pleasure of the board. That could be my agenda. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing that, I will call a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed? Name? Uh, motion chair. All right, now we have motion to prove electrical work. For a process analyzer for, uh, arts and phosphate measurement. With sample prestation from energetic.
All right. Uh, this is part of the permit requirement for the wastewater plant. To test the process that is going out and make adjustments. On demand, instead of waiting for test results to come back in a couple of weeks. From what I gathered is, they were told it was only gonna be around a couple thousand. But where they want to put it isn't gonna work. And we have to go, I believe, on the other side of the wall, so that's where this nine thousand comes in. I did reach out to another contractor and we will not get on it. So. The paper power that is here, they have like a wastewater division. And I believe these guys are coming from plants and sock though, the sock is doing some upgrade, so. These guys know what the wastewater stuff is. So I'm putting wires in and they don't know.
I've worked with a lot of construction jobs, they're good.
Yeah, they. I use some info to ask them, so they're, they know their stuff.
Do we have a price on that?
Uh, I have a. A quote from them, eighty-nine fifty.
This is budgeted, Chris?
Um, I don't think so. None of the five things or three things that we're talking about are technically going to be.
Okay.
But that's not to say you couldn't. Charge your capital line item, right, which for some of these we'll, we'll be talking about. And then for like item number D, we'll talk about using the emergency fund. Um, so I think for, for this item specifically, you could chalk it up to it's a capital expense, when you're adding on to the capital stuff you've already paid for.
We need to actually, a motion in a second.
Make a motion to, uh. Prove the word for the process analyzer. Not to exceed that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to do this, not to exceed, but. Any other discussion? I will call a board, all those in favor.
All right.
Of course. Most of the chairs are listening. Uh, recommendations for pump upgrades on well number two.
So I briefly touched on that a little earlier, um. Well, two was out of service. It's off the table. And I believe Brandon just left because we have low water colors, oh, please. We don't have water being broken. But that's where it's gonna push into a bind is if we don't have enough water. And the president was there when they pulled the pipe from the pump out. And they looked at it. Just stick your finger in the hole. Yep, so water was just being pulled up and pushed right back into the tank, not home. The nice thing is the reservoir, so.
Really maybe to feed something like that.
So I don't think the pipe and the bolts on there are the issue, it's the pump. So, uh, he's gonna quote me both ways, so rebuilding it, if it's just thought like it'd be rebuilt, and we get it back in right away, perfect. If he says no, it's shot. Cause he thinks it's over twenty-seven years old. Then you have to put a norm.
I don't remember any of the well pumps ever being replaced. We've done some rebuilds. Said there was a pipe that was very clogged in that building.
So, I think so when they came up.
Yeah. But that's all I recall with issues in that building.
That's where they drifted in the. The chemical. They drifted in and it made a, like a solid mass of crystal and all of a sudden they just screwed up. And we entered, we drifted somewhere else.
So more of a, more of a kind of what's going on with your, um, a little bit back now, because it's something that we have. We are in Madison, we're just looking at well one, so, right?
Um.
Um, so first, currently if I'm wrong, we did the bottom most, and. Only knew that we needed to do this anyway, well, one was moving this one specifically, well, one of the well two, is that correct?
Yeah, so it'd be some, uh, creative bookkeeping and us remembering for next year, but yes, you budgeted funds already for next year for well one. So as far as the purchase this year, you would make a motion to approve it out of our reserves. And then fingers crossed, nothing else bad happens next year, then we can use the funds that we budgeted for next year to reimburse ourselves in the reserve fund. So yes. Next year, but you're still working in this year, and it's a this year expense.
Does this not fall under replacement funds? They have replacement.
We don't, yeah, like, and sure, we have ways.
Give your wastewater replacement.
It's just on this version.
Yeah.
Okay, so this seems. This seems to be a timely.
Yeah, there's just three weeks.
Either, either it's gotta get done, right? It's pressing, it's gotta get done, let's just make it happen.
So are we gonna replace, if, if we can fix that for a amount of, a reasonable amount, fix it, stick it back in, but we have to put a new one in. Are we going to try and put the one end that we were going to. Upgrade to?
No.
Or do we have to go size for size?
Um, so. He thinks that the efficiency on this pump has been way lower than what it's supposed to be doing. So he said you put the sitter, you're gonna see a difference. I know, uh, future studies was to make a red board on bigger, to help put the output. Um, if he can do that with what we have, with the B and D and that pump, he's gonna turn it on the way.
We just might not be able to go all the way to where we were playing.
Correct.
And we, while we were with number two, with number one.
But we could have been pumping four hundred gallons that it's supposed to be doing, and the last year only been doing three.
As I said, the past couple of years.
So you talked about it, but did you say that, uh, well, it wasn't operating a hundred percent?
Yeah, I mustn't believe you at that time, so.
Well, now we know.
Right, I know, yeah, that's, this, when we're talking about budgeting, this is a scary map, so. Actually, I thought the efficiency on the. Building out here was lower than the one. That failed. Which is why this one is gonna get three out. Yeah, so this one, I didn't, that's gonna be shaped, or not as efficient as it should be either.
So we have to do both of them.
Yeah.
And if we have to do that one, I don't, I just don't wanna spend like twenty thousand dollars on, on a pump. And then toss it up here, now when we replace it with a bigger pump.
Well, the thing with the process, because we didn't do that time of day, and we just do it for a while. If you have a little pump, you just pump it along the period. Yeah, so the size of the pump isn't that relevant, because it all goes up to full water color. Yeah, and so, if it takes three hours instead of. Five versus five hours, it doesn't really matter in the long run, you may have more electrical costs, but as far as. As much pumping as we needed, we're good either way. What's the best way to balance?
Um, I would just make a motion to approve not to exceed, what was it, fifty thousand?
Yeah, I don't know what the ability, the ability is if we have to replace the pump. Please sign. A year off. He was gonna try and work on it today and give you a call, um, see if it's there.
Okay. Is there a number you feel comfortable with, because I just, I would just like to let you run. Fifteen? I thought you were doing that. Okay.
Cause he doesn't like throwing money away, it's not easy.
Okay. Cause I wanted to give you authority to do the upgrade if we can.
And when he gives me what his recommendation is.
Yeah.
It's a better idea than what we're gonna. What the best way to go.
Can you delegate this to?
You wanna set an actual dollar amount and then delegate to?
That's what I was getting, getting at, yeah.
We got reader too, what is?
What could it go up to?
Well, it could get up to. Is it fifteen and two, David?
Uh, well, it's at two grand right now, just pulling it, so. You gotta reset it, another two grand put back in. Uh, I would think, if it has to be a new pump. Forty would be the max on it.
Saying it, sir.
We make a motion to go up to forty.
That's against to us, as, as your staff, yep. Yep. So yeah, so approval not to exceed whatever that amount is, and, and this would be from our reserve account, if it's billed this year.
Is this two separate motions, or one if we got it repaired, is that one thing? Or do we just go up to forty and leave this in the description? Okay, I'll make that motion then.
There you go.
Whatever it's gonna be repaired, place up to forty thousand.
Yeah, cause we're gonna, we've been paid for it. We have a player that. All right, any other discussion?
Forty.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Call the board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, of course. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, next one is a similar situation. We have a, um, motion to approve purchase of a twenty-fourteen F three fifty from Wisconsin surplus, which was a shocker of truck. And, uh, Eric is familiar with it and will be on there. So you want to explain it to check out?
So with the addition of an American W person, uh, we are short of, you know. But I didn't have the dump trucks, we need to drive around in and speak to everybody. And then, um, summer hell, um, we don't, we don't have that. Uh, to purchase a new truck, so the truck that sock goes replacing this with is a two fifty. Took a little over eleven months and that truck replacement to do the same entire thing is over sixty-three dollars. Uh, this truck here, uh, I mean, it was Kyle's truck, set up garage, no rust, no dents. It's got the plow, it's, it's got everything set up. Drive the out, out road and you can put it to work or put the bill to me.
And it can be in our garage in a month or whatever, two weeks.
It closes tomorrow at noon and Monday could be here. We just a dollar a month. Uh, I think credit out to thirty-one, I, I wouldn't want to go with forty on it. But I, I know it's an eight-year-old truck and used and I think it's got forty-eight thousand miles on it. What is this? So. And it's hard to get the trucks and let alone if you're helping out to go anywhere, you could plow it on. That flower replacement right now, eleven thousand, or that same exact flower put on.
My kid's got a truck for sale. Two thousand. Right now there are three wood pickup trucks in the village here. The old fire truck and, uh, like a two thousand twelve Ford. Yeah, and the Ford is only one of the fall, right?
Uh, we have the fall with the Chevy and, um.
Oh. Okay.
It's a very, very small pile.
All right, and then we also have the Explorer. So there's four wood vehicles. Is there another truck, a lot of waste better for?
No, that's.
Okay.
So.
If you.
The wastewater right now is being used, uh, whole mass.
Okay. And I guess what's the proposal when we pay for this?
So this is the most, um, I don't want to say tricky, but I guess up in the air one. Um, because it's not replacing anything. We weren't planning on buying a truck, but I understand that the need is there. So again, one could argue this is a capital expense, right, for this year. You, Dan, guys didn't do very much capital projects in general this year. Um, so this one for sure, I'd rather book in twenty twenty-two, not tie our hands in twenty twenty-three's budget already.
Can we use any ARPA funds?
That would be up to you guys if you'd want to do that. I've already assured your, your DPW director that, you know, if he gets this truck, you know, good luck asking for the next, for the next thing, but um, you know, I, I understand, stand the need for it and I agree with, with additional staff and snow coming, you know, this wouldn't be a bad thing to happen, so.
Public Works brought this up for John, you brought it up, and Public Works, uh, funds, bad truck. It is a little.
Well, we were considering just buying a just buying a truck without a box or whatever, just to get, we had it ordered.
Right.
In, in line to be produced, just you might have to wait two years to get a powder, you know? I mean, this is not, is a powder truck, but, um. It's a, it's a truck that we're going to need is when we have another employee.
Just to play devil's advocate, I'll warn you as a board, because we learned the same thing in the city of West Bend. Once you start allocating this fund to, ARPA dollars towards things like this, very quickly, every other department head or even you guys within the village are going to be saying, oh, you let it go for this truck, why can't I use it for A B and C? So that's, that's. So I'm just letting you know that if you, you might be setting a precedent if you go that way, not that that's a bad idea.
If they use beer, it seems like a smart thing to do. Well, I'm just saying, I mean, even if you get a, you know, plow through a box or a box that can be removed, that's going to be what over Walmart's of a hundred thousand and we got what a hundred and sixty-five thousand left? We allocated a hundred to the splash pad. We had what, two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty-five, so we got a hundred and sixty-five thousand left that we had or some less.
I said it was more like a hundred two, two thirty.
All located on. Correct, because that's for the fundraising for the other hundred.
So the truck is up. No rust, no dents.
A lot of times in municipal truck pickups especially are taken care of very well.
Seats aren't ripped, uh, Kyle didn't smoke. I mean, this was Kyle's truck. The, the trucks.
I understand Chris is saying other department heads, but I mean, we had a meeting before budgets to go over what do you want ARPA funds for.
Yeah.
A little lot out there, so I guess we needed it and we are running very thin here right now on funds, so you start in January, right?
Yeah, we'll need it when we hit the summer, the summer.
And you feel comfortable going up to forty is what you, what you think?
I'm hoping it doesn't go.
That high. Thirty-one.
Yeah, well, the rush is going to come tomorrow.
Bits. Yeah.
Yeah, I hope it doesn't go more than very four. And then the nine percent commission on it, so we're at thirty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hoping that's where it stays. Actually, I'm hoping it stays right where it's at. So.
Too bad we didn't know Sacco was doing this. You could have bought it right from them.
Good, it was actually good. Yeah, I don't like them. So he can see that on surplus side. And then it magically always comes out to that. So I don't, I don't.
Okay, I'll make a motion to not exceed forty thousand dollars. Want to use ARPA funds? Use an ARPA funds. I'll second that.
All right, any other questions or discussion? During that, I will call all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Think we'll be happy with this. Um, items for future considerate, isn't there one more thing? Oh. Yeah, I'm on the, I'm, I'm two agendas. Any, uh, correspondence? No. Items for future consideration.
I, I, I do have, but I inadvertently misled you. When you said the other room and you said that, uh, your buddy up there talked about records downstairs. Who knows, step, Mr. Stefan, who knows that building probably very well. I went back. There is a door down there that's locked. I don't have a key for it. I couldn't tell you what's in there.
But it's something, there's something on the floor.
It's not my, well, no, 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 it's not, that basement is not mine. I, I've never. I'm not breaking it, but I, I think that's the only way you're going to get in there unless there's a key up here somewhere.
We've got a key.
There you go. I do know, as I said before, some records who moved out of there, I remember that happening. They were moved out of there. I don't know where they went to, but I don't know what's behind that lock door.
Some records expire.
In the basement.
Yeah. They go down the stairs and then there's the heater and everything. And then there's the door that's where we're behind that.
They're in there like two summers ago, I think.
Yes, right.
Yeah, and there's stuff in there then.
Yep.
Yeah.
When we were looking at the roof.
Yeah.
So I didn't want to leave with you thinking, uh, like I said, I don't know what's in that room.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, there could be records in there. I don't know if it's wet in there.
Well, there's shelves and stuff and there's nothing on the floor that I was coming to look, so.
Well, my stuff is on shelves and my stuff isn't wet, so. And I would guess you're probably okay unless it's. And there isn't, there, although there was leakage at the front of the building. That would have run in to that room if it goes all the way across, which I don't know if it does or doesn't. Like I said, I've never.
There a drain in there though too, or just one for the whole base?
I've never been in that room.
There is one in the basement.
There is a drain at the base of the steps.
There might be one in my truth.
Couldn't, couldn't tell you, but there's another room there, so.
Thank.
Thank you.
I was, I was nothing. Party, I was nothing.
Hold.
Oh.
And of course, it's going to be older too.
Have a nice night, yeah.
Yeah, right. Man.
Good night. So, no items for future consideration, we're in order to.
Who's doing it? I want to do a turn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The fourth, we're cheering. Yeah, they still think it's.
Public Works projects for twenty twenty-three or. Not yet, because nothing. So.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.